I will call to order this meeting of the Board of Directors of the Lewisburg Area School District. You please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I just have two quick announcements. We are missing Mr. Fetzer this evening, who is at the Sun Tech Monthly Meeting and is excused, and also Dr. Unsupper Fosero, who had a family commitment and could not be here. We also met in executive session for approximately 20 minutes after the December 6th Board Meeting to discuss three legal matters. Which brings us to the citizens' comment to the board on agenda items. We have some online comments which Dr. Fairchild will read. For the people who are in the room and would like to make a comment, we have some cards over on the table where you signed in. If you would just put your name and your address on a card and pass those to Mrs. Young at the end of the table there. She will get those to me and I will call on people, which will move us along. So, Dr. Fairchild, if you'd like to start us with the online folks.
Absolutely. Our first comment is from Kevin Willie. He says, "You are responsible for the safety of our children for six to eight hours every day. Masking keeps them safe. All the science supports this. If you really care about our kids, make masking mandatory until we're through this craziness." Next one is from Justin Madhouse. "Our family supports continued universal masking for all students, staff, faculty, and visitors while on school-owned property in accordance with CDC guidance and regardless of vaccination status, as long as transmission rates remain moderate to high." Next comment from Michael James. "I am writing to support the immediate resumption of a universal masking policy for all LASD schools. Scientific evidence demonstrates that masking greatly decreases in-school transmission of COVID, even with high levels of extra-school COVID transmission." And he provides a link to a study of North Carolina schools that mandated masking versus those that did not. Batbatard Jigjurdson. "Please take whatever measures possible to keep the mask mandate. My kids are now finally vaccinated and excited to go back to school, but banning mask mandates will make it very difficult." Lori Mildrew. "I am writing to encourage 100% masking, even though my children are now fully vaccinated. We will continue to mask to help reduce the strain on local hospitals and keep our kids in school." Here. Renee Gosson. "Dear Lewisburg School Board Superintendent and Administration, I am writing to express my strong disagreement with the PA Supreme Court's recent decision to remove the mask mandate. I urge you to please instate a health and safety policy that requires masks of all LASD students, teachers, administrators, and visitors, whatever their age or vaccination status. Globally, nationally, and now locally, we are in the midst of another COVID surge and at a time when activities are being moved indoors because of cold weather. Our numbers were already rapidly increasing because of Delta, even before the discovery of a new, more contagious variant, Omicron. Our local hospital ICU occupancies are almost at full capacity. Geisinger has 167 COVID patients, 97% ICU occupancy. EVAN has 48 COVID patients, 94% ICU occupancy. Just over half of Union County, for example, has received a first dose of the vaccine, and obviously fewer for the booster, which is not sufficient to protect our community from the rapid spread that Delta and Omicron represent, whatever one's vaccination status. Even for those of us and our kids who have been vaccinated, there are scientific reports of waning antibodies. Let's not forget, the booster is only authorized for children 16 years and older, and a variant that is circumventing current vaccines and has managed to infect vaccinated individuals and to reinfect those who have had COVID and, like the former, also thought themselves protected. We are at the eve of the holiday period where there will be intergenerational gatherings, bringing together young children ineligible for the vaccine, and older grandparents who, like the immunocompromised among us, are more susceptible to this disease and its long-term effects. Do I realize that our kids are oxygen-deprived and that they will not, they will learn not as well with masks on their faces? Yes. Do I think they learn better in a classroom with masks on than in an ICU unit? Yes. Masks optional or recommended is not sufficient. Now is not the time to let down our guard against this unpredictable and highly contagious disease about which we still know very little." Next one is from Simone Roy. "I ask you, the members of the school board, to put in place a mask mandate for all teachers, staff, and students of the Lewisburg Area School District, regardless of vaccination status commencing immediately. The Pennsylvania Supreme Court's recent ruling created a situation that puts our students and their family members at risk in the middle of a school year when things were going along relatively smoothly. You have the power to solve this problem. Please follow the science and give us a policy requiring everyone to wear masks." Michael Drexler. "Today's daily item announces that COVID-19 is surging in Pennsylvania. Our hospitals are full, and while most of those hospitalized and dying of COVID are unvaccinated, the emerging variant Omicron appears to evade the immune response triggered by all but a few course, but a full course of vaccination and booster shots. Consider what happened at Cornell University in Ithaca last week where nearly all students are fully vaccinated. They had 900 new cases of infection and have closed the campus. Our children are not even eligible yet for booster shots. This is the wrong time to remove the masking mandate. While young people are not likely to have severe cases of COVID, they can pass the disease on to their older family members. We know this is happening in our community, and older people and those with compromised immune systems are much more likely to end up in the hospital. Please reinstate the mask mandate in the schools. Masks work, but only when everyone participates." Jove and Donna Graham. "Our family thanks the administrators for putting together this flexible, yet sensible revision to the July Health and Safety Plan, and we ask the board members to please approve this plan tonight. We appreciate the fact that it recognizes we are currently in a period of very high COVID transmission and are likely to be through the winter months, and so following CDC's recommendation for universal masking is very important. We also appreciate how the plan includes specific criteria for when masking can be changed to a recommendation instead of a requirement. Thank you for your efforts to keep our schools open and protect our kids, teachers, and community." Sarah Kelly. "Thank you to the board and district staff for the updated Health and Safety Plan, which returns our buildings to universal masking. I believe that this very simple precaution is a big reason why none of our schools have had to be virtual yet, even though it's happening all around us. Many of our kids, even those who are vaccinated, have family members who either can't be vaccinated or have health issues that make contracting COVID a real danger. It isn't just about individual kids, it's about our whole community. I hope this measure stays in place for all school events through the end of the school year. Thank you." Bradley Newland. "I am very happy to see the district adopt universal school masking during the school day. Between the current hospitalizations that we are seeing locally and the potential for an Omicron variant surge, this is a crucial step in helping reduce the risk to our students and their teachers. A specific point of concern that I have is the use of the weight room and the use of masks, where much of the use will occur after school hours. This is a closed-in area where individuals are exhaling and potentially within close proximity. I would urge the district to require masks in this specific setting even after school hours." Let's see here. Marlena Lira. "My name is Marlena Lira. I am a Kelly Elementary School parent, an epidemiologist, and an incoming 2022 member of the Lewisburg Borough Council. Our winter surge of COVID cases began several weeks ago, and the community is already seeing rapid increase in hospitalizations. In the weekend in December 11th, Union County had 236 new cases, translating to a population rate of 476 per 100,000, which is very high. Furthermore, less than 1% of cases in the Mid-Atlantic region are currently related to the Omicron variant, and we have yet to see the impact it will have on our community. While research is being conducted at record speed regarding the Omicron variant, there are still many unknowns. Now is not the time to remove COVID-19 mitigation measures in our schools. Rather, it is the time to enhance them. All of our children deserve the best education we can offer them in the safest conditions we can provide. Luckily, we know what works: increasing ventilation, wearing masks, implementing social distancing, and getting vaccinated. The more of these measures we continue to work on, the better our winter will be and the safer our children and families will be. These are not the only tools at our disposal. If the board could implement a test-to-stay policy and utilize rapid tests to reduce time students spend at home if exposed. Furthermore, the schools could coordinate with the county and state to offer vaccine clinics in schools for children and parents who opt in, making vaccines more accessible to those who may want to but haven't gotten vaccinated yet. I strongly urge the school board to continue requiring masks and implementing social distancing for all ages in our schools and continue efforts above and beyond these measures to increase ventilation and access to vaccines. These efforts will decrease the risk of serious health issues to individual students and their families, teachers, staff, and the community at large. Please keep mitigation measures in effect in the months ahead. Thank you." And that's it.
Thank you very much. Nick Bender.
Yes, yes, if you could come to the podium, please.
Okay. My name is Nick Bender, math teacher at Lewisburg High School. I would like to request that the board eliminate all mandatory masking from the proposed Health and Safety Plan for several reasons. First, disruptions to the learning environment. Surgeon General recently warned of a youth mental health crisis with increased anxiety and depression on the rise in students. Mask mandates will help worsen this sad reality by stoking more fear and anxiety as it is over the past year and a half. Social interaction also suffers. Students are more likely to withdraw and hide behind a mask and use their phone instead. Less participation in class. Far fewer of the personal connections we value. Second, there's no firm evidence masks have a significant impact on the spread of COVID. There's been no correlation between masking and COVID cases around the world. No difference in areas that had strict masking mandates versus those that didn't. New England Journal of Medicine, Cambridge, and Oxford are among those with studies concluding that masking has no statistically significant effect on actual community settings. If masks worked, they would have worked by now. We've still had kids getting sick as they normally do with a cold, strep, COVID cases, even with mask mandates in place. If they did work, we then put nearly 200 kids in the cafeteria three times a day without a mask on, which would seem to cancel out any alleged effects of masking. Third, the stats have clearly shown that COVID is not dangerous to minors. American Academy of Pediatrics says almost zero chance of severe illness or death for children. Probability comes out to between 0 and 0.003%. And according to the CDC, kids have a much larger chance of harm from a car accident or drowning if we're not addressing those items. So, what do we have to protect the kids from? Is it the arbitrary rules from the Department of Health? Let's focus on more pressing issues, not political games. Behavior, discipline, student mental health issues, janitorial, food staff needs, to name a few. We're supposed to teach our students logical reasoning, critical thinking skills. We truly follow the science and look at the data. We realize kids are not driving the spread of COVID. Those who want to be vaccinated already are. Our requiring universal masking, we're only instilling a perpetual irrational spirit of fear, and that students should see people simply as vectors for disease. This will only serve to increase the fear and anxiety and depression among our kids today. We're expecting kids to learn algebra, geometry, trigonometry, also communicating that they better not breathe the air around them. We don't want to continue in-person learning, but pretending masks actually make a difference is a trade, and forcing kids to wear them for seven hours a day, in my opinion, is simply ridiculous. Let's have masking decisions for every student, put in the hands of each family, and not mandate them for students or staff throughout the Health and Safety Plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bender. Ms. Benny.
First of all, thanks for being willing to serve in this position. I know you hear a lot from people, and I am distinctly in the minority of people who are speaking tonight, but I felt it was important to share my, my opinions and position. I am concerned with the revised Health and Safety Plan on the website, and at the very least, please consider broader community input before approving this plan tonight. I have been a registered nurse since 1995, have a broad practice base ranging from labor and delivery to ICU, and did part of my time in the Navy and a little bit on the civilian side. I'm not currently practicing, though I have maintained my license in subsequent years. While the matter of masks... I'm sorry, I am most concerned about the proposal surrounding masking and contact tracing. While the matter of masks is a controversial one, masks should be optional regardless of vaccination status for several reasons. First, the cloth masks worn by most people, regardless, afford little to no protection from the transmission and contraction of COVID-19. In fact, COVID-19 infection rates have shown no relation to mask mandates or the lack thereof in communities where the matter has been studied. Additionally, the fact that I hear that many students in the high school do not wear masks properly suggests that the school has been operating to some extent as a mask-optional environment since the mandate was imposed in September. Who will oversee the enforcement of the new punitive measures listed on page six of the updated plan? Is this measure going to burden our teachers with another responsibility? Why are such measures necessary? Have the numbers shown that there was a change in infection rates before or after the mandate was imposed? What is the significance of April 19, 2022? Is that, is it that it's the day after spring break? Masking also makes it difficult to read emotions and affects the ability to hear well, to speak clearly, even in non-disabled individuals. It is also interesting to note that pre-pandemic, the World Health Organization stated that masks were not an effective mitigation strategy in a respiratory pandemic. Why now is a mask suddenly effective? Or is it simply a measure to make us feel we are doing something? Additionally, as more studies are emerging showing that the risk of reinfection is minimal in those who have recovered from COVID-19, why do they need to continue wearing masks? As to contact tracing, what do the numbers show? What percentage of students that have been forced into quarantine from a school contact have subsequently become ill? The last school time with no instruction, mental, emotional strain, lower grades, and simply living in fear of quarantine has had a negative effect on our students. If our students were at as great a risk of severe illness or death as their senior citizens, then perhaps such measures would be warranted. The three-month post-COVID grace period for contact tracing is overly cautious as well. In light of new studies showing that recovered immunity is superior even to vaccination, please consider allowing at least a six-month grace period. Most countries in the EU count a person as immune for six months, while Switzerland extends the time to a full year. Thank you for your consideration. If you would like to see any sourcing on some of my statements, I am happy to provide that information to the board via email.
Thank you, Ms. Benny. And Mr. Jacobson.
I just wanted to support masking and scientific research. I just heard from the previous two speakers that there's no research showing that masks are effective. While sitting there, between that time, I found articles and studies from CDC, Mayo Clinic, the NIH, Stanford, and others that have shown that masks are effective. I support scientific research. Everything we're hearing from scientists and from people in the industry, from the medical industry, is that masks are effective. To me, anxiety happens when people are fearful and don't know what's going on. Our scientists give us the best indication of what's going on, and to me, following what they recommend would reduce fear and anxiety in the students. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. And Ms. Grafer. Sorry if I... Is that correct?
Hi, Laura Grafer. I'm a mother of two children, somebody three in the district, and want to say thank you to everyone serving here. I understand it is public duty that I've seen, or a couple that I have zoomed in on with the young family and seen that there has been, for the most part, balance in that representation, and I just appreciate all that you do with giving your time to the school district and really believe that you have the best interests of the students and the faculty in mind. Just wanted to make a couple general comments that I would ask that the same rigor and balance that is required of our students be represented in the decision that's made, and just transparency in the why. I, you know, like I said, trust that there is balance on the school board and that the best interests are in mind, but the explanation to our students and faculty in a balanced and, and very rigorous and fact-based presentation, I think is important. There are just a few examples I have of the way things have been falling out with the current settings that I think are concerning. And the first is how children are pulled from class. I've heard multiple experiences, including my own, where children are alarmed, embarrassed, frustrated with being pulled from class, and myself as a working parent, unable to make it there very quickly, felt the same frustrations. I'm not saying it wasn't right or that it hasn't been the right decision, but I think there are things that we can promote to make the experience of a situation like that be as, you know, un-alarming and factually based as possible for these children, if that is the circumstance. And I would underscore that there are several surrounding districts that have expressed concern about the number of days missed by children who are contact-traced asymptomatic, and I would just underscore that that's a number that really should be watched and we should be transparent with, because if a child receives a negative test, there's still a chance with the way that the days play out per the policy that they could need to miss additional school after a negative test. And in children, that's a very difficult thing to explain, much less as an adult try to understand. And I understand, you know, there are guidelines for the state, and everyone here can find an expert, whether it be medical or political, that would back their side, I guess we could say, on this case, but I would just ask that there be transparency and consideration about that. And, and just the final two points that I have are examples of things that I think if we move forward with the masking policy as posted yesterday, I think are important considerations. The first is children with disabilities. My own experiences with speech therapy, where children are still going through speech therapy with masks on. And I would, not as an educator, but just kind of locally relate that to a teacher teaching what they're back to the class. I think there are things that still need to be addressed. This is going to be a long-term solution to keep our kids in school, and that is just one example that I have experienced. And the last comment I would, I would like to make is in regards to much spacing. I know that there are comments made about this is one of the obvious times, especially going in the winter, that children will be next to each other unmasked, and the potential, especially for contact tracing in that setting. If there would be an additional look at the spacing for those children to make sure it's outside of the contact tracing limit, I think that would not only go a long way and just fair balance across the community, but administrative burden, I'm sure, would be reduced by, you know, making that accommodation and making sure that kids are adequately spaced when their masks are off for the contact tracing, just, you know, wouldn't be an issue in that known risk setting. So again, I thank you for your time. Just wanted to, again, underscore providing fair balance in the comments from the community and appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to thank everybody who came to speak and the folks who contributed online. And now we move to a discussion of the Health and Safety Plan. In order to begin that discussion, I need a motion and a second on the plan. If there's a second. Second, by Ms. Benny. Dr. Bell, would you like to talk us through this bit?
Sure.
Okay. Work with me. There we go. Okay, so just some facts about the Health and Safety Plan and why we have to have it. It is required by Pennsylvania Department of Education that every school district creates a Health and Safety Plan for the school year along with an instructional time template that accounts for the required number of instructional hours and days in a calendar year. This, the recommendation is also that we use the CDC's guidance. The state is not imposing any additional guidance to school districts. It has to be reviewed every six months, so we're at a timely spot where we would have been reviewing our current plan anyway, even if the mask mandate was not changed by the Supreme Court. It must be posted on our website and submitted to the Department of Education, and it also has to be approved by the school board. So those are just some facts, just so everybody has that information. So a little bit about our local conditions. And this is here in where we are in Union County. We have been consistently in substantial or high transmission since really the beginning of the school year, pretty much that started to change. Hospitals are near or over 100% capacity given the day. And as of December 13th, this is really what we're seeing in terms of numbers. We've had 155 positive cases, and I have to say that some of the staff members who have tested positive and students are actually breakthrough cases. So it's important to keep in mind that the vaccination law, it's helpful, and it's certainly diminished how sick those individuals got. It isn't the elixir that we hope it to be quite yet, but it's definitely one of the best mitigation strategies that we have to prevent hospitalizations. Number of students have been contact-traced, and so it's about 1,556 of those are students. We only look at those that are associated to the 155 cases that we have in school. There are additional students who are kept home because there's positive cases at home or they're ill and waiting testing to determine if it's COVID. So there are more. There are also students who have become positively COVIDed, but there isn't any contact tracing to do because their students are already home or it happened over break in school. So there are more cases than that out there than just that number. Number of student quarantines, 1,243. That is a lot, along with those that, as I mentioned, as parents may keep their students home. That is really disruptive to learning. It's taxing on our staff to be able to provide their students with their assignments that they're able to deal or get them caught up when they come back. One thing really good places in person learning. About 102 students who have their contact traced did not have the quarantine, but they were fully vaccinated, and that is mostly among our students that are in the middle of the high school. Did have our first instance where an elementary student this week was already fully vaccinated with a COVID positive. So, while many of our cases are worse or happening with our elementary than our high schools and middle school students, as those students become fully vaccinated, we do expect that fewer of them will have to miss school. Among staff members, we've had seven quarantines and 26 vaccinated staff contacts. So those are individuals that were already fully vaccinated. So, we have, this morning, Ms. Muser and I joined a Zoom meeting along with Matt Exley from Evangelical Hospital and Dr. Mathie from Visner, who is a pediatric critical care physician and head of the department. So, I just want to play some of that video if we can.
The one thing, you know, very, very happy to talk about, thanks, Pat, for allowing me to talk about the medical, and also, you know, the impact having that on our children's hospital across the region, health system across the region. The quarantine question is something that's still, you know, one of these things that is evolving, and I think that we have to be sort of careful with that. What is specifically the question we're at for? Because again, that's going to link to testing. And where we're, you know, having some struggles, again, as you know, and that is, you know, is, is access to testing now. Because we are, we are overwhelmed in a lot of the allocation clinics and so forth. So what's going to be, kind of, just tell me where the school system is, you know, seeing the, the need at the implementation of quarantine in the appropriate places?
So, we are following the CDC guidance and the other health guidance. And so anybody who does close contact, we are quarantining them. Parents are just getting a little weary because not all of the students know. Parents are just getting a little weary because not all of the students know of it. The test to stay program that's available, the department's event and help, would that be something that the school district should explore?
Quite possibly. So right now, if you have a close contact, what are you doing in Lewisburg? What is your recommendation? And again, based on the CDC, but how, how long and, you know, is, do you, do you right now have a return to school? By testing sort of policy?
We don't have it by testing. We have 10 days unless the student tests within the window that is permissible. We've reduced the quarantine time.
Got it. Very, very good. Yeah, so I, I think, you know, the party line for us would be to maintain those quarantine recommendations from the CDC. So, but I'm happy, I just, that's the one sticky area that, again, from school district to school district. It's getting hard to sort of keep it all straight, but again, I think that you are doing the absolute correct thing to sort of stick with the national guidance.
What are the types of illnesses that we're seeing with school-aged children?
That's a great question and one that I think we have good news and then we have some, some news that is concerning and that we have to sort of share with our families and our parents. The illnesses, the vast majority, thankfully, are going to be. Easily resolved with home care and it's going to seem like your child had the flu. Especially if they're, they're, they're unvaccinated, that flu symptoms may be a little bit more severe. But even in an unvaccinated child, we've been fortunate that the vast majority have done quite well with what we would call outpatient care. Nonetheless, they do sometimes require checks from their pediatricians to make absolutely certain they're not becoming dehydrated. To make certain that they're not developing more of a severe form of the COVID-19 illness, including respiratory distress. So again, the vast majority will not require hospitalization, will recover on their own. And often without any specific COVID-19 treatments, like we would perhaps do. Remdesivir, which is an antiviral or steroids. Those really are, are focused more towards the more severely ill. So again, most outpatient and be very, very well-sung will have very minimal symptoms. And then there is even a small portion that will have no symptoms. So again, that's the good news. The concerning news is that the absolute volume of COVID infections has increased dramatically. So those numbers in children. Continue to rise, and then the subpopulation of children that can develop severe illness. Is also rising. So we often think of those youngsters that are developing severe illnesses having what we call comorbidities or other issues. And the one condition that we are, we're keeping a very, very close eye on and actually now know is a risk factor for severe illness in children's obesity. We have seen that otherwise healthy youngsters that, you know, are out there, you know, playing. Football and baseball and going to dance class, doing all those normal things. If they have, you know, you know, weight issues and they are, you know, at that point where their BMI. Their body mass index may be in an area where folks are working, getting even. In better health by reducing some of that weight, those youngsters are at risk and we've seen that certainly with our hospitalization. The other thing though to say is that healthy, otherwise normal kids, even without obesity, can develop severe COVID infections. Again, exceedingly rare. The one thing that nobody would have predicted two years ago. Is that there would be a very, very highly unique condition, mainly for children, although we've seen some things that. Mimic an adult is MISD, or multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children. Those cases have even taken me back to it. Like this youngster, this kid. Is incredibly healthy, had a mild COVID infection, or may have even been asymptomatic. But now has developed inflammatory response, often delayed, that has affected not just. Lungs, but may affect the heart, may affect even nervous system. So that's why we call it multi-system. And it is a significant inflammatory response, but it's to the illness. And the good news is that with supportive care, those youngsters get better. They can, and the vast majority of them get better. One thing I want to tease out and make sure there's no confusion about. Is people say, well, wait a second, you know, we've heard that the vaccine causes some of those same symptoms. So that's a great question. I think that when we hear those questions, I like to get those questions because it gives us a chance to sort of. Be able to further explain and to clarify. Yes, there has been some vaccine associated, what we call myocarditis with a specific vaccine. But the good news is those are incredibly mild cases and are more rare than the MISD kids. So the benefit of getting the vaccine, and again, in my predates case, we're just not seeing a significant uptick there. But what we are continuing to see is youngsters, very rarely, but developing MISD, just to put some numbers behind it. So of the, since the pandemic, you know, literally tens of thousands of adults have been admitted for COVID-19. And have been very, very ill and, you know, many of them, some of them have lost their lives. So it's so sad and so sad for our families, for our children are being affected by that as well. But with kids, we've been fortunate. However, the numbers still are impressive. 200 children in central Pennsylvania have been admitted to Genoah's Children's Hospital, uh, in Genoah's Children's Hospital since the start of the pandemic, 200. Okay, about a quarter have been required intensive care, alright, so about 50, so youngsters have actually come through our ICU. Those 50 have been, often those youngsters might have some other health, ongoing health issues. Some of them have been healthy, some of them have had MISD, some of them have had such severe MISD that they've been on life support. And thankfully, we have a phenomenal nursing staff, phenomenal critical care staff, hospitals, they have support services. We've been able to get those youngsters through, but no parent, no parent would want to go through. You know, an ICU state or even a hospital state because of COVID. So that's why we're still sort of very much endorsing those things that we, we feel with, with, with a great deal of confidence are working. And vaccinations, certainly now we have it from five to 11, and then up to 11 to 18, so we have access to vaccine. And then those other things that help us keep the transmissibility of COVID at a, at a, at a minimum. Masking, especially indoors, making sure we have good ventilation, hand hygiene is huge, okay? And then social distancing, last thing, and I'll, I'll, I'll get another question, but none of these things. And, and one of the things that I think we as physicians sometimes do is we, we don't have enough humility about certain things, right? So I, I can't say to Matt or Kathy, this is 100%, this is going to work, you know? We have to have some humility about this, right? We're, we're, we're learning what the virus does. We're learning how well the vaccine can prevent severe illness. We're seeing those trends that, yeah, these are moving in the right direction when we talk about vaccine. We're seeing the control that masks can have, not only COVID, but with other viruses. But we also know none of this is 100%. This, you know, these, we're, we're, we're working with, you know. Scientific data, we're extrapolating it to the human condition. And the human condition lends itself to some lapses. So if they say, well, you know, I'm not quite sure about masking, you know, because there's been this, there's been breakthrough. Well, the human condition sometimes, you know, we're maybe not masking all the time, perhaps masks themselves may not be the absolute correct one. So we're learning and we're learning about, you know, how, what works. When we look back at the last 20 months or so, we, we do, we have good, good evidence. That masking has indeed prevented transmissibility not only of COVID, but other viruses. And the, the continual, continual incremental data that we're seeing longitudinally across more time. Is showing us that even with breakthrough infection, especially in adults. The vaccinated do better, they just do far, far better. So we, we really want to sort of continue to endorse the things that are working. I apologize for taking the long.
And I think the one, one thing to add to that is, you know, in addition to. You know, we are continuing to see large increases. I'm sure that you can speak to this from a best, from a perspective. But we are continuing to see large increases in the amount of kids that we have coming through. You know, that are just being the traditional viruses that we see every time of year, you know, the, everything from RSV to norovirus. My own daughter had a human metapneumovirus, norovirus, was very sick, you know. We were close to having to have her sent over to Genoah's, so, you know, there, there are those continued diseases that are. That are not only affecting our kids in our normal methods, but it's also taking up. All of these extra illnesses that we're seeing are taking up bed space. I'll give you a great example. I know that we're going to talk a little bit about system status a little later on in the conversation, but. A great example of that is as of this morning, in a state the size of Pennsylvania, there are only 29 pediatric ICU beds available in the entire state. Yesterday on a call we had with the Department of Health, a central region of the state, there were two pediatric ICU beds available in the entire central region. So I think that that, you know, right there kind of gives you, not only are we dealing with COVID, not only are we dealing with seasonal illnesses, which. Put plenty of kids in the hospital on a good year, but we're also dealing with that system status. The capacity issue as well, which also prevents or presents another risk factor.
One question I know that, you know, lingers for all of us is how much longer would masks? We have a good number of our older students have gotten vaccinated. We do know that a number of our younger students are getting vaccinated. We were fortunate enough to have a close contact that was fully vaccinated in one of our elementary schools. So our parents, you know, have, have made the decision. Some parents are still waiting to see. You know, they have to make their own decision, but as we have more vaccinated students, K-12 and staff. How much longer do we need the masks?
So Jennifer, great question, also sort of a million dollar question, right? I should get a million dollars, maybe at this point, exactly right. So again, this is where humility comes in, right? So I would say this, that, you know, masks to me, to get through this seasonal virus. You know, situation, I think Matt said this perfectly, is it's not just COVID-19 that's putting a strain on the healthcare system. And especially in pediatric, it's, it's RSV, it's influenza, get your, get your flu shot. It's rhinovirus, central virus, even metapneumovirus. We are, and thank you Matt for pointing out how resource constrained we are from pediatric beds. You know, in our own ICU, you know, with, you know, being careful about HIPAA, I can tell you that there's a mix of viruses in there right now. We do have COVID, you know, we have some severely ill youngsters with COVID. But we are also seeing the cycling through of these other seasonal viruses. It's been, you know, you know, again, if it wasn't such an emotional toll and human toll that COVID has brought. It would almost be a fascinating thing to sort of consider, you know? What happened last year, you know? So last year, you know, everybody was sort of a little bit more locked down. You know, I think we were doing a lot more of this, a lot more of this, a lot more masking, and what did we say? I can count on one hand how many RSV patients I saw for the entire season in the pediatric ICU here. And my colleagues across the state were saying the same things. I can count on one hand how many RSV will come in the next two or three days, three, four, five. So it's, it's, it's remarkable, you know, if you really are a virologist or epidemiologist, this is like, wow, you know? So we know that masking not only helps the COVID situation, but also the transmissibility of these other viruses that are often droplet. And. Easily passed from our kids. I have five kids. I was almost, you know, ready to get sick myself. You know, every September, you know, I sort of had the summer off and then boom, you know, by October, I was fighting my third or fourth cold. So it, it is an important thing to consider. So to answer your question. I would, I would endorse that we're, we're going to have to mask through the spring, you know, or at least for the early spring. The other thing, you know, that I, I'm, you know, I'm going to sort of put a plug in for getting our kids outside. Once the season sort of passed and you had that outdoor capability and the windows are open and you have ventilation and so forth. We do see a drop in all seasonal viruses. It makes sense, right? We tend to be outside, we're not closed in as much, we're better ventilated. We're doing healthier things other than, you know, doing this thing. You're getting water, everything. So you're outside and you generally are in more healthier and ventilated environment, so. I would say at least fill this the spring, but you know, Jennifer, you said something very, very important earlier in the call. You, you talked about, you know. Making a decision. And then reassess. And not sort of sticking your, you know, your, your flag in the ground and say, this is what we're going to do, we're not going to buy. This is evolving. It is folly to think that you know what's going to happen in the next six weeks with a great deal of surgery. We can do our best, yes. I, I think we're at about 80%, that we, we use our best, yes, 30%. But certainly with the new variant on the con, we, we, we've got to wait and see what the galaxy involves.
Thank you. Matt, a little bit about the hospital system, if you can share?
Sure. So, you know, as we spoke about with the seasonal virus, and the COVID that we have still in the community. I have some numbers that are going to be telling, and unfortunately, as much as I'd like to be headed out of this, I don't work right there yet. And so, you know, we keep a lot of statistics and data here trying to understand the situation and see what's happening with our community. And, you know, just kind of starting out, our, our data team got us some information at the, at the beginning of the week. And just to kind of show you kind of what Dr. Maitre was talking about with the comparison of last year to this year. So in, for ECH alone, from July 1st to December 11th, we saw 568 admissions. In 2021 compared to 341 in 2020 during that same period. Also, the number of people detected in the three county areas, so Groh, Humboldt, Steiner and Union. In 2021 was 10,337, based off the state data, that was 8,736. So we are seeing an increase this year compared to last year, plus we're seeing a return to healthcare. Of folks who didn't seek healthcare before. So that person who was afraid to go out of their house, was concerned to be with other people. You know, put off their healthcare for their heart problem or their diabetic problem for, for that year, you know, period of 2020. We're now seeing them come back to get additional care, which of course is increasing, you know. workload on the system, but what's happening is that we're seeing is as they come into the emergency department. If they would have came in last year, there's a potential that they would have not been as far in their disease process, that they would have been discharged. Now, as they're coming in, we see them sicker, and so there's more admissions being done now compared to before COVID. Because they're further along in that disease process and assuming the sticker will make things worse by then. So I can tell you that, that ECH here, and I know Daxler is a similar vote, I certainly won't speak for them. Actually, you know, the hospitals across the entire region are happening in this last several weeks. There have been, you know, there have been several times where we've had one critical care divert. Because we have physically not had a single critical care bed left in the hospital, and we've had critical care patients. Boarding or waiting for beds in our emergency department. There have been times where we've had 55 people waiting in the emergency room for care, which is unheard of here at Evangelical. Luckily, it's not very often, but we have seen cases like that in the last several weeks. We recently just, because of the status, amount of patients that we have waiting in the emergency room for beds in the hospital. We recently put a plan in place that once we get above a certain number of hours in our emergency department. We have kind of an overflow clinic that we're able to, to refer people to, to get those, you know, minor things done, so they're not having as long a wait times. But the challenge is, is, you know, folks coming in and potentially having multi-hour wait times to be able to get a bed in the emergency department. Not necessarily because of the capacity of the BD, but because we have so many patients that are boarding, waiting for, you know, inpatient beds within the hospital. It, it, you know, that spills over into the emergency department. So in general, the hospitals in the region are, are, you know, very full of capacity. You know, we're doing as many, as much as we can with the staff that we have available. Our staff, that's like, they're rock stars, you know, they're pushing through every single day, trying to provide the same level of care that we do, you know, pretty good. That we expect out of our staff members, but, you know, it certainly has. Um, but, you know, it certainly has been a challenge, um, you know, that we've had to reach out for additional resources from the state as far as, um, you know, additional ventilators, additional cardiac monitors, things like that, that we've never really had to do before. So, you know, I think the overall message that I want to send is, um, regardless of your thoughts on masking or, or vaccinations or COVID or flu or whatever it is, the, the, the priority right now needs to be staying as healthy as you possibly can. If there are things that you can do, like masking, like getting a vaccination. Yeah, you know, if there are things, small steps that we can take. If you remember back when we first started talking, we talked about the Swiss cheese model, um, and why all those levels were important. If we even put another piece of Swiss cheese on right now, that's what you want to do. But the goal is at this point to stay at our hospital. The goal is not for one of those patients waiting in our emergency room bed, waiting, uh, you know, a few days before you get an admission. Uh, I can tell you that a few days ago, we even, um, you know, we, we were full to the point where, um, we potentially had a look at transferring patients, but the closest bed that we were able to find available was thirty hours ago to be able to send an ICU patient. Um, and, and I know that, um, area, this, area facilities, um, you know, within the region, uh, it's not just here. Uh, yes, some area facilities got calls from IUD looking for ICU beds. So it's a, it's a pretty big problem. And, and again, I think the goal right now is doing whatever you can, adding whatever layers of Swiss cheese you can to be able to, to give you a, uh, you know, a light up.
Well, I thank you very much for, um, you know, just sharing what the conditions are out there.
Want to share with everybody that, um, last week at the superintendent's council meeting at the IU, we heard from both, um, Dr. Happy and, um, Matt Exley on very, very much sharing some of that same information. That was last Wednesday and of course, things changed for us on Friday and we're here today. So these are things that I have heard before. This is a constant, um, topic for us as superintendents. And all of us are trying to respond as best as we can to our community and our community conditions. So a little bit about the plan that's before the board this evening. So we're proposing to continue with universal masking during the school day and students walk into school up until they are dismissed at the end. Um, the date that we have set right now is April nineteenth. It is after spring break. That is a long time to get us through into the spring months. But, um, we are also going to take a look at what the local conditions are. One of the components of the plan is to, um, ask parents to submit their vaccinations. We've done that in the beginning of the year, but to do that for the students, so we can have a sense of exactly how many students and staff members are vaccinated. Again, that's another layer of protection. It's not required. The district is not requiring vaccination, just encouraging it. But then we, we would know. That would also help with contact tracing as well. If, um, we move to low or moderate transmission, um, we can certainly relax that with masking as well and go to recommended. I really hope we don't have to go until the nineteenth. The rationale for picking a date out further is, is that if it gets worse, um, than where it is now and masking is lifted, it's going to become increasingly more difficult to layer in that mitigation strategy. I appreciate everybody's tired. I'm the first person that wants to burn this mask and all of my masks. But what we have to do is make sure that we're keeping our students in school because what did not go away is our requirement to, um, report the number of cases and quarantines that we had each week to the state and also for mandatory shutdown, which also eliminates athletics if we hit that number. So my goal is really to have the kids in person and, um, I don't want to jeopardize that in any way. CDC and Department of Health might also potentially revise their guidances. They know more about this new variant and vaccination rates across the country change. Masking is recommended for after-school activities. So, um, what the consideration here is, is that those that will wear their masks without problem will wear their masks. We have visitors that will be coming during athletic contests or even, um, using our facilities for community, um, athletics. So that's really up to them, what they want to do. It's a choice to be here after school. So with that choice, you bear the responsibility of, um, assessing the risk yourself and making the determination as to whether or not you or your child will wear the mask. Um, so enforcement would be a problem. We simply do not have the staff. We do not want to create conflicts with parents from other districts. Um, we would highly encourage our athletes to, um, continue to mask when they are not in play and follow what was initially in the masking order or nothing else, then it will, um, help improve a contact tracing or shutdown situation. Um, there will be consequences. Part of what we needed to do, um, between Friday and today is review consequences, which have gone to our solicitor for review as well. So they are things that we, um, certainly legally can do and are within our bounds. Um, we ask kids to, or actually ask parents to make sure their kids are wearing pants, trying a shirt and something on their feet when they come to school. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask parents to just continue with the masking. And just as we would address any other inappropriate attire that students may have, and we're going to follow through with that as well. Always beginning with trying to talk and, and explain the rationale and the fact that keeping schools open is really important, keeping our community healthy is really important. We're unique in our region. We have a number of our parents who work in the healthcare system. And I want to make sure that they're there if God forbid, somebody has an emergency or there's an accident that they can take care of. And adding one more layer of stress to their already very stressful positions isn't fair. We learned when school shut down in March of twenty twenty, the whole world almost came to a halt because people had to be with their kids. So we're an integral part of the community and we happen to be in a community that is also very nested within the healthcare community. Um, next slide there, additional points. So they did work last year. We saw that. We were able to be open. We certainly had cases. Um, kids will transmit, um, just from some of the activities they're doing or within households. When we see that, we do see some kids developing COVID in quarantine. It's very hard to know if it was exactly because of their school contact or whether or not they were quarantining outside of school and participating in other activities. We just don't know that. Um, but we don't want to exacerbate a situation that we know could be very difficult. Um, what's so different and Dr. Maffey certainly spoke to this. The world's open again. People are doing their normal activities and they are so important for everybody's mental health and to feel like there's light at the end of the tunnel at some point. Um, we don't have mask mandates for the public. Okay. So the conditions out there are different. There's just more opportunity to, um, either get COVID or even some of the other diseases that are also besides unpleasant can also be very dangerous. Um, thinking of the spring, um, you know, once we're through the normal, um, by airborne virus cycle that happens every year, um, you know, we're going to be in much better shape. We do have more students who are, or parents are reporting that students have other illness than COVID. So everything really is going around. I know for many of us, we didn't even have a cold because, you know, we've been very careful with hand hygiene and, um, masking. I could speak for myself. I had to buy new cough medicine and stuff in case I need it because you always need it when you don't have it. But everything expired. It had been so long since I had any of that, um, in the house. Um, this gives time for more people to be fully vaccinated as well. I, I understand where the hesitancy is with some of our parents and with some of our staff members. But more information will start to come forward on this and encourage them to speak with their physicians who would never recommend that somebody put something in their body that can cause them harm. Goes against, um, the oath that they take to be physicians. Um, so that's certainly going to help. There'll be more time for our staff who are eligible to get boosted. And that's really important as well. Winter's coming, kind of in some way is, wouldn't be able to tell by the temperature outside, but these fluctuations are no, also don't help us. If we look last year, we had seven hundred and fifty-eight quarantines or for this year so far as of the thirteenth. And, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, for this school, I apologize, for the school year last year, we had a hundred and two cases. And, um, seven hundred and fifty-eight quarantines so far this year. Look at that number. That's changed. One thing, um, that I certainly would want to propose to do as well is to take a look at the test to stay program in order to be, I think, John, that's on the slide. Is that there?
I don't have, this is the, I'm sorry.
I fixed it. I loaded the same wrong one back. Um, so the test to stay program, what this does, it's a department through the depart, it's a program through the Department of Health where students would, who are identified as contacts and they're asymptomatic, would be able to continue to come to school with a testing regimen. So this eliminates the need to quarantine if you're not displaying symptoms. Um, one of our, um, concerns with it is it's manpower intensive. We just have one school nurse at the high school and a Kelly and a nurse and a nurse's aide that go back and forth between the middle school and Lynn Town. So, um, our friends at this, um, at the IU and Geisinger are working on ways to be able to make that more, practical to be able to implement. The requirement though for that is, and this is through the Department of Health to be able to participate, is that a masking requirement needs to be in place. Um, so we already have a meeting set up with the IU to learn a little bit more and how to get started with that when we come right back from the holiday break. And I think that that will certainly help, um, people feel more comfortable about, um, whether or not students can, can come back if they're not displaying symptoms because it is a hundred percent true. Not everybody quarantined ends up developing COVID. But we want to be sure. We want parents to feel comfortable, um, with sending their students to school. Staff to feel comfortable knowing students who are exposed are there, but that they're very closely monitored. And we certainly don't want to see the disruptions that continue to occur with quarantine. And, um, you know, even just the availability of testing and the cost. I think we have to be very mindful and it takes a couple of days to get those results. Sometimes takes a couple of days to even get the test. And you're putting yourself in a facility where we already know that there are people who are ill. So, um, you know, we just want to keep everybody safe and keep our kids in school.
Thank you, Dr. Ross. So, um, we will now turn to discussion.
I'm in favor of the health and safety plan with the mask mandate. I just want to be very clear. You just said we can only qualify for the test to stay program if we have the mask mandate. And the test to stay is the way we get out of this perpetual quarantine situation. So for that reason and many others, including everything that we've heard from experts and the vast majority of peer reviewed literature, um, I think we're, we're doing the right thing here.
So how long will it take us or what has to happen for us to qualify for the test to stay program?
We'd have to have a mask requirement.
Right. So say that's done, yeah.
And we just sign up for the program. I think it could be in place by mid-January.
That does seem like, I know so many families are so tired of that and I get it. And if there were a way for us to make that not be such a burden, I think that would be ideal.
It's in keeping with our goal to keep students in class as well.
It sounds like we can, we, we may have opportunities to do things. For example, I have heard about lunch spacing. I know that comes up every once in a while. That's a volunteer question at this point, right? How many locations can you have? And, you know, how much soup do we want on the library carpet, right? Like, these are, these are things that need to address. I totally see the issues there though. And then for, you know, hoping that we can continue as we did last year to encourage going outside, right? But, and, you know, just putting back that little phrase, when you're outside, you can be unmasked and I think going outside is a good thing.
With the test to stay program, I'm assuming, I know some teachers down in Philly, um, where the test to stay is used. And I'm assuming parents have to okay for their kids to be tested at school.
Yes.
So they have an option.
Not to participate.
Right. To get their kids vaccinated. If they're not comfortable with that, then if they were contact traced, they would have the option to keep them home for the ten days or the testing on the eighth day past. I haven't memorized by now because we've been there a lot this fall. Um, or they could send them to school and they would just get tested at school. And so if they pop up, pop, if they pop, if they come up positive, obviously somebody has to come get them and take them back home.
So they would, but the, from exposure and that's day zero, within two to four days, they're tested the first time and then they're tested the second time within five to seven. So it's twice that they're tested. So it's, it's.
So it's, it's not a every day when they show.
Not every day and it's the rapid antigen test as well too. And, and the testing has certainly improved, right? So it can be less.
It doesn't have to be that PCR, yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, I'm, there is no secret that I am a firm believer in masks. Um, I have a spouse who has not contacted COVID after working with COVID patients uh, very, very, very frequently because he isn't a mask. Um, so I do believe they work. Um, but the contact tracing is wreaking havoc. Um, it has wreaked havoc in my house. Um, so I had a eight-year-old in tears because he was missing his student teachers last day, last week. Um, and that was pretty tragic to watch. Um, but I also know it works because I also have a close friend who was an asymptomatic kid. Never would have been tested, got tested to hopefully go back at day eight instead of day ten and showed up positive. So I, I've, I see both ways. Um, but I do think if there's a way to work with what we have and if there's something more out there that can get kids in the building more, um, I think that is providing some relief to families. So whatever we can do to learn more about that or get that going or feel out the community of how they feel about it, I'm all for that.
And so like what Ms. Graber said about making sure that we are using the physical distancing that we need to, especially with the younger ones, so that that can sometimes rule out the need for the gap back tracing if we're. And I know I was an elementary school teacher. I'm fully aware of how hard it is to keep them on a square, let alone. So just saying as much of that as is possible. And boy, these past couple of days have been really nice. I hope we've been able to spend some of it outside these unexpectedly warm days. Um, does that mean if things don't slow as it gets warmer, will we again look into getting some tent space and great?
Yeah. Another thing might be too, since it's so labor intensive, the, the test to stay and hard on the nursing staff. I don't know if CSIU has ideas or what, what could be done to make that burden more doable for them.
That's part of what they've been working with, um, some of the healthcare providers in our area to be able to provide that support because the nurses still have to address the student that needs to come down for their medication, diabetic testing, maybe if it gets injured. So they have their normal foot traffic kind of coming through there. And, um, you know, there's going to be a concern on their part about not being able to see those students because of testing students. So we, we needed, we need more hands to help.
I would just weigh in to say that I, you know, we did hear from some folks who have serious concerns like Ms. Crowe's articulated about the, um, the quarantine protocols. But given the surge that's happening right now, I think it is certainly in everybody's best interest to wait until we can get the test to stay in place and maintain the quarantine policy that we currently have. Um, you know, the, the high and rising case counts is, you know, this is not the time to be relaxing anything. And then as soon as we can get the test to stay, um, system in place, then that will start to alleviate some of that quarantine burden.
Yeah. I think also we need to show some respect for our local healthcare workers. The folks that I know are, are just beyond, um, you know, it's, it's sad, the patients, the, the situation that they have. The, the system is, you know, beyond capacity. Every, all, all the, the workers are working extra or they're overburdened or they just have so much anxiety. So when we add to that, um, you know, their kids being out of school, it's, it's too much. We've already asked a lot of them. Let's, let's be respectful and show them that we're trying to do our part.
Um, I wanted to comment just, I do agree with the mask.
I wanted to comment, just, I do agree with the masking. But I also, as we're looking at continuing to extend it because of the need being there. Looking at some of the comments that were said tonight about some of the issues that might be coming up, like regarding speech was mentioned and one of the things we are in our. Pretty much third year now of kindergarten that has been affected. And then obviously beyond that, more speech issues. And reaching out to the community, is there people with maybe some ideas? I know there isn't other places that would speech people are utilizing like clear masks or things like.
I thought we were doing that. For some of our students who were receiving speech services, it's just not every student that they might. Or staff member they interact with may have unless they're. But they're going in for speech therapy. That's what's happening. But I understand there are other circumstances where they need to be able to see somebody's mouth. So. To my knowledge and the teacher's been making accommodations, I think, of course, if you could speak to that a little bit.
I will say that whenever I pass by the speech room, I see the speech teacher in there. There is a shield that's there. He will, especially when he's focusing on the way that lips work, he will sometimes pull his mask down to reveal that. He will put his mask back up. And students are continuing to, to receive their speech. So that's what I've observed.
And part of I think what some people found with the clear masks, they. They're, because it's not cloth and it's clear, it. Gets very hot, you know, so there's, that was something we looked into. And again, it depends on how profound the students' needs are as well. I can't speak to what might be for students in. Any of our placements outside of the district, whether it be IU. Or not, but it's, it's pretty much been up to the parent, the teacher, the IEP team to determine what's best.
Can I just ask if any of the other principals want to speak up? If there's are aspects of the plan that feel. Appropriate or not from where you're sitting.
I will say that certainly as, you know, having the age group that was able to get vaccinated the first and being eligible to get some boosters here the first. The difference in the contact tracing of trying to do it. Last year at this time compared to doing it now. Is just mind blowing how much. Less cumbersome it is. I will say that we very frequently. Are able to contact trace and not have anybody that we have to quarantine. I don't know, Dr. Polachak, that's been, you know, in your numbers of quarantine, that includes. Each time anyone has to or that has, you know, we have some kids that I'm worried about that keep getting caught in that repeat.
They're in that number. It's instances of quarantine.
Right. So you know, that is, is most concerning. I think the kids. You know, primarily what we're finding at lunches and at study halls. You know, most of our students, again, we're, we're not seeing tons of quarantines there. We do have some extra tables out. We did put, we've had it available here in the DCI as it's gotten colder for students if they want even more space. And we do have some students do that. We've even had a couple of students in the office if they need to. I think it's been very important. For our kids to be able to get back. I think that mental health aspect is something that everybody is concerned about. It does make a difference. Being able to see someone's face, being able to read that body language. But again. At this, as, as Dr. Jablonski said, at this point in time with cases on the rise and. I don't think that it would be the responsible thing to say we don't need masks right now.
From the Kelly perspective, as I, as I shared earlier in the year. Yeah, I believe that students should wear masks until there's a vaccine that's available. There is one now available for the students in my school. As of today, now yesterday afternoon, I just sent an email out to families asking that they could. Share their vaccination status when completed with the nurse. We have approximately 11% of our students are fully vaccinated at Kelly. At this point, and we know that there are several others that are still going through and waiting for their second dose. So that's, that's positive. But you know, I, I would encourage the district to continue to listen to the expert advice and look at better trends in our numbers. As these variants are coming out, it's becoming, you know, more and more difficult to kind of wait and see how some of those things go like the doctor had mentioned earlier. But all that being said, I mean, the mental fatigue on students and staff and parents is very, very real. And I think that, you know, as, as important as I believe personally and professionally, we need to look at, at that data and listen to those. Experts, we also need to think about where might be reasonable things we can do with masking to alleviate some of that. I mean, especially what I hear from. From people, staff, students, it's like, okay, I'm vaccinated. I'm doing all the things I'm supposed to do and. And still, you know, we're wearing this. So at some point in time, trying to be able to provide some of that relief. I just know when we took down the desk shields and we said that kids could work together in small groups, but let's not stay together too long and those kinds of things. There's a collective exhale of, of relief at feeling that, that normal a little bit more. And our kids have been phenomenal, like they wear their masks. When, when they come in in the morning in the gym, I mean, they go down there, the teachers have taught them, put your arms out, keep your distance, and they do. And when they eat lunch, they put their mask back up when they're done. They're really good at, at, at what we're asking them to do. We have a lot of kids and we don't have a ton of space to be able to spread them out. So lunch and buses still become a challenge. But we do everything we can to avoid those close contacts. I'll contact the bus company and I'll check on the student that was positive. And anybody that was around them, were they in close contact for more than 15 minutes? Like they just got on and we're only on the bus for about five minutes. That. Means they're not a close contact. So we're not just willy nilly kind of excluding students. We're really looking at that information. And we have had a few situations of students who were positive before. And I think, Dr. Baugh, I think our second case of a student who was vaccinated happened today. So we did not have to exclude. One of our students from a new, a new case today. So again, just please keep those things in mind and anything we can do that would be reasonable, that would help with some of that mental fatigue. That I think everybody's feeling on, on through this.
I think too, the, the one component, when, when Dr. Ross had said about, you know, getting what those current vaccination, knowing what that first setting is, I can kind of. Ballpark it a little be, just because I know who I've had the contact trace and who I haven't. And I've seen that improvement, but certainly knowing the numbers behind it. And, and, and more of an exact figure certainly allows us to make. A decision, a better decision sooner for our kids, because I think the goal is to ultimately. Of course, not have to be masking and not have to be doing this. So but you know, unless we truly know what. The data is that we're looking at and you know, we gave that sheet out at the beginning of the year, but so many of our kids either hadn't gotten. You know, vaccinated yet, or maybe they had their first one and you know, most of them. Got their second since then and, and things, you know, some others didn't, but we really don't know for some of our kids yet. So I think really just. You know, making sure that we have a clear picture. Is something that's really important so that we're, we're not just going on, you know, what our gut is or what we think, but actually what. You know, some of what the numbers and statistics are telling us.
I would say Lindtown's perspective very similar to what Chris shared. The one thing I would like to add that, that I tried to encourage and it's going to go out in my next newsletter too, is if, if someone in the household is waiting test results. Please keep, keep the children home until you get those results. We've had, I mean, several times where kids are getting picked up at nine fifteen in the morning. School starts at, at eight fifty because they just got a result of a family member that was positive. So. Just being cautious in that way can really help. Like Chris said, the, the bus and the cafeteria are the things. Space right now, we have kids spread out. I'm, we're checking footage. Are they masked down for 15 minutes by the time they get through the line? By the time they empty their tray? We just don't have the space when, when it, when it is cold weather, unless we're going down through the halls and in the rooms. And at Lindtown with sharing specials teachers with other buildings, they're not there every day. So we don't have those open windows. So the gym is used when the one grade is eating. That's not an option. Fourth grade's in session when fifth grade eats. They're closest to the cafeteria. So using those hallways aren't an option. So it's not. That we're not looking at those things. We're constantly doing that. Staff fatigue also, there, there have been very few days where we've had a full staff. We have other teachers, other staff members, counselor, myself, we're teaching art, we're teaching music, fourth grade, fifth grade covering. For support staff members. So it's. We're looking at those things continually. The, the hardest thing you have to do is pull a kid from class. And we try to do it discreetly and to do that in a way, I mean, it breaks your heart. Those are the hardest conversations you have is. They're fighting back tears. You're almost tearing up as you're talking to them, trying to keep them calm. And then even the space where we're, we're having them wait, trying to do it discreetly. It is a challenge and it's something we try to be very aware of. We're not trying to, to do any of those things. Not in a careful way, but it, it is a very challenging and we're constantly trying to find solutions. Most times they're not quite as clear cut as they may seem from the outside, but the big thing really, if you're not feeling well. Just really, we encourage you to stay home. Please err on the side of caution. It is a strain on families to provide care there, but if that can limit a ripple effect where now you're taking out. Three to five kids for a 10-day window potentially, it really can reduce the numbers of kids that we do have out.
At the middle school, we have those same concerns about the us in the cafeteria. We're fortunate in that middle school kids often have a group of friends. And they tend to eat together every day. They don't have to, but they like to. Also have a group of kids that have vowed to eat outside every single day until spring or until we don't have to do this anymore. So we still have tables outside. We have tables on the stage. We're spread out about as well as we can be. We have the other interesting phenomenon that the other buildings don't have. So I had a group of 11, 11-year-olds. Along with a group of 12 and older. And the difference in what it feels like when I have to contact trace sixth grade as opposed to seventh and eighth grade. I'm far more hopeful in seventh and eighth grade that I'm not going to have to exclude as many students. Because they are vaccinated and it is the case. And it seems like it's a higher percentage of kids. In sixth grade, when there is a contact trace and a higher percentage of those contacts that actually do have to quarantine. And it's unfortunate, but I, I feel like over the course of time, they're going to catch up. And those numbers are going to get better and they're going to seem more similar as we get into the spring, the sixth graders and the seventh and eighth graders as well. The masking situation in middle school is, is another one of those things where it is. A better fit for kids that age, middle school age, to do an all or nothing kind of thing. It is, nobody wants to stand out. And it is so much easier for everyone to feel comfortable wearing a mask than not. I've had more kids come to me feeling uncomfortable about. Certain kids not wearing their masks properly. I'm surprised at how many there actually are that, that voiced their concerns. Still a small number, but it's more than I would have expected. If there's something that makes it so that it's not universal inside the building, it would make it very, very difficult. For everyone to feel comfortable inside the building, but also very difficult to enforce. So the way that this new health and safety plan is written is, is really helpful for the middle school years.
Thank you. I appreciate your input.
I'd just like to say that Paul and Chris both, both hit on the point that I wanted, that I wanted to, to stress in, in that when you talked about the mental health and all that. You know, the, the, the only thing that I'll say is that. Actions taken with the very best of intent and based on the very best advice available have unintended consequences. And I think that some of the, what you talked about is, is what we're seeing and some of the, some of the behaviors that we've been seeing this year and last year. That have been developing that we all know are. Associated and related to the pandemic, the things that are going on are, are symptoms and, and to some extent are unintended consequences. Maybe unavoidable ones. I don't know, but they're important nonetheless.
Is there additional discussion?
I would just add that there were some, just in the review, some feedback that came back from school directors about clarity and language. It would be helpful for me to read through those.
Sure.
Okay. So the effective date would be December 17th, 2021. That is on page four. The second and third bullet down, the consequences, we would add language stating it would be a combination of those consequences. In many instances, that is the progression of progressive discipline that's raised to different levels. It's, it always has to be a. Under section B. Six. Across striking unvaccinated. Cause you're socially distancing regardless. It's just an impact on whether or not someone's in contact on page eight. It's two and three in the first section E. Language, we would like to clarify that if someone is vaccinated and once that vaccination is completed, so. Want to make clear that we're not requiring it, but just if you have it, please give it to us. And for everybody's information, vaccinate, I'm the only person that has all the staff's vaccination. Information and the school nurse is the person who would warehouse that for students as well. That's not made. Public to teachers, principals as a need to know for a particular student of their contact tracing only. But this isn't shared with anybody else within the organization. Under section F, first bullet. We add a combination of. The, how we consider positive and negative results with the CDC and Department of Health's guidance that allows us also to. You know, truly take a look at the test to stay program. I think John already had the PowerPoint. The one that's in or docs is, has the information about the test to stay. I switched that out right before the meeting, but John, I think you already had it loaded in a tab. Ready to go in the organized way in which you are. So.
Grab the latest version here.
Folks would, and this will be shared with the community, this power.
Yeah, it's, it's on public on.
And I believe that's about it. Plan.
So.
Yes. And a link to the program is there as well.
Yes. And this is available on the board's website for those at home.
Thank you for running through those. Appreciate that. Any other discussions? Hearing none. I'll take a roll call vote, please, Paul. Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
No.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion's ready. Thank you. That concludes our business for this evening and, and we return to director's comments. Maria?
I sincerely appreciate everyone from the community that came to speak. It, it means a lot that you're willing to be good citizens and share your opinions and your thoughts with us. And we appreciate that. As well as the principals. Thank you for weighing in. You're, you're there. You're in it. So thank you.
I'm really just echoing the same. I mean, it was good to be able to show enough and putting comments in to be able to get community feedback on things to bring up. Some issues that may be occurring. I think that's really important. I think that the principals' concerns, especially about staff fatigue, I think is really important. There's a lot that we can't really do about that right now. And I think that this plan helps not adding more to the fatigue in that. So I think. That that is good input from everybody.
I'd also like to thank everyone who's here. I think because this situation is evolving so unpredictably, as the healthcare professionals have pointed out. Has, has made it just such a huge challenge.
as the healthcare professionals have pointed out, this has made it just such a huge challenge. And every family and every household has been affected uniquely. I mean, we can't know how each household's been affected. So it's very helpful to hear personal experiences and from staff. Thank you for everything you're doing. I know it's been kind of a long haul, unfortunately. Ms. Cross?
I ditto, I thank everyone for writing and submitting things and coming to share your thoughts. I am very much on the, I want this to be all over bandwagon. Unfortunately, we're not there yet. And I think for right now, universal masking is the best choice, not out of fear, not because I am afraid of anything, but it is a necessity to keep our kids in person, to keep our hospitals able to treat the patients who show up and a way to help keep our businesses open. So for me, it is, it is not a political vote, it is not a fearful vote. It is a necessity of what we need to do right now. And hopefully, a few weeks, few months, whatever, it's different. But today, right now, this is a necessity, I believe.
Mrs. Moser?
Yeah, I, I do want to echo, I think everyone has really captured it is, it is, we need to hear from the public. I, I like the public comments, I appreciate everyone's emails and submissions. Two things, I think it's really important that everyone knows there is an off-ramp. There is definitely an off-ramp to this. So what does that mean? Maybe it's a threshold amount of vaccination, maybe it's that the seasons change, everyone's outside, we see the dip. Like, you know, everything was so promising in June and July of, of last year, right? So, or this, that was this year. And, and I think we'll get there again and then we'll be at that point where we can unmask. But I agree, I don't think we're there yet. And I just think we need to appreciate, I've had two emergency room situations, neither related to COVID. The waits are insane and the staff is trying so hard to be helpful and to be responsive. But you can tell that they are, they are just stretched so thin. And I, I don't, you don't like to see that in your community. But the most important thing I want to say, you know, besides thanking the administrators, is the teachers. When my kids, for either quarantining or, you know, breaking an arm or doing whatever reasons, have had to be home, the teachers have been so excellent with putting things on canvas, with sending things home, that is, that is the extra burden. And they've handled it so well. And so I think that's where the thanks goes. The thanks goes to our teachers who are making it feasible for kids to continue to have an education and the, the healthcare workers that are just looking for a break.
I'll just echo the thought, the thanking the public for the, for coming tonight and making their statements and for the emails received. More importantly than just providing your opinion, I really appreciate the fact that every one of them was civil and thoughtful and well, well, well-presented. That, that hasn't always been the case, but it was, it was certainly this, this time.
I'm good, thank you.
I, I don't want to repeat everybody, but I, I would just like to say my own thanks to the folks who showed up here in person, to the folks who contributed online. And also, we, we received one thing and another, almost 20 emails in, in a few days leading up to the meeting. So we really did hear from quite a lot of people, I completely agree with Mr. Heath. I really value the respectful tone and discourse that we received from, from everybody. I think we're very fortunate to be in a community that values that strong sense of community. I'd also just like to thank everybody here and the, and the principals for showing up on short notice. An emergency meeting at this time of year is, is a burden for, for everybody. And I'm just grateful that everybody was able to be here and, and do this good work. So John, do we have any online comments on non-agenda items?
We'll see if we have any more comments. Nope, no more online comments.
Is there anybody here in the room who would like to comment on a non-agenda item? Then I will take a motion to adjourn. Moved by Dr. Jablonski, second. Second by Mr. Heath, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.